Just want to say the world is full of comedians. We have a few here tonight. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Present.
Present. Counsel Cahill.
Present.
Present. Counsel Capano.
Present.
Present. Counsel Chakoudas.
Present.
Present. Counsel Calucci.
Present.
Present. Counsel Seer.
Present.
Present. Counsel Lapierre.
Present.
Present. Counsel Ozy.
Present.
Present. Counsel Annette.
Present.
Present. Counsel Trahan.
Present.
Present. Counsel Walsh.
Present.
Present.
I'll rise for a moment of silence.
A moment of silence for the Euoffelous family.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Communications.
We have one appointment. Dear counselors, I am hereby appointing Harry Janis as the Assistant Harbor Master effective immediately. His term will expire on December 31st, 2020. Sincerely, Mayor Judy Flanagan Kennedy.
Approve.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings.
Public hearing. Petition of Rachel Bennett for Lightning Coffee Roasters located at 271 Western Ave., Suite 106, to offer retail sale of coffee beans and drinks on Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
All those wishing to speak in favor? All those wishing to speak in favor, please state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Rachel Bennett. I am the petitioner and owner of Lightning Coffee Roasters at 271 Western Avenue, Suite 106. For those of you who aren't familiar with the location, we're located in the Lydia Pinkham Building, which is home to a diverse community of artisans, craftsmen, fitness studios, and more. We're really excited to be moving in soon. It's ideally zoned for light industrial use, which is perfect for coffee roasting. However, we'd like to be able to also sell retail whole bean coffee as well as brewed coffee. And for this, I'm here before you today requesting a special permit for this. I'd like to, I've spoken with Counsel Ozy about this, and I'd like to assure you that we're working closely with the Inspection Services Department to make sure that we're up to food code and we can obtain the required food permitting for this use. Thank you for your time and your consideration. I'm available if you have any additional questions.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address.
Hello, I'm Judith Bach. I live in the Boston Machine Loft on 13 Willow Street here in Lynn, and I wanted to speak in favor of Lightning Coffee Roasters. I am a student at the Clay School in the Lydia Pinkham Building, and I think it would be a great addition to the artist and small business community to have a coffee roaster and be able to buy freshly roasted beans and linn. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Ozy.
I've spoken with Ms. Bennett regarding this, and I think it's a very good idea. I think it's a good way to help promote, as she pointed out, the artisans and retailers that are in that building. And if you haven't visited there, I recommend that you go by. And if you love coffee now more than ever, you can go visit the Lydia Pinkham. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. I just want to say we need eight votes on this for approval, so... Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Public hearings to be set down.
We have the petition for assigned permit at Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen located at 180 Boston Street. Petition for assigned permit at Pie and Pint located at 23 Central Ave. Petition of Kula Camarinos to replace an existing two-car garage with a three-car garage at 84 Molton Street. And the petition of Verizon to place approximately 150 feet of underground conduit from Verizon manhole number 98 located at the intersection with Greystone Park in a southerly direction to number 104 Ocean Street.
So wish of the council.
Come down.
Motion made.
Check it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Committee reports. Utilities committee.
Unanimous vote of the committee. Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Budget committee.
Mr. President, unanimous vote of the committee. Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ways and Means.
Unanimous vote of the committee. Motion accept. Second.
Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I make a motion for an emergency?
Urgency.
Attorney Lamanna, do they have to be read for the emergency? Yes, okay, they have to be read. Motion made for emergency, seconded. Please read.
Order that the city comptroller be and hereby authorized to take the following action. Transfer the sum of $5,368.51 from the account of Lynn Police Expense to Lynn Police to fund prior medical claims. Certify as an available fund the amount of $4,990.98 as allotted to the City of Lynn Police Department by Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the FY17 Underage Alcohol Enforcement Grant. Certify as an available fund the amount of $19,500 as allotted to the City of Lynn Police Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the FY17 STEP Grant. Certify as an available fund the amount of $9,065.36 as allotted to the City of Lynn Police Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the FY17 Traffic Enforcement Grant. And finally certify as an available fund the amount of $212,080 as allowed to the City of Lynn Office of Economic and Community Development by North Shore Workforce Investment Board for 2017 Youth Work Summer Jobs.
Motion made on the emergency to approve, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Public safety, Counsel Barton.
Unanimous vote of the committee. Motion to approve.
Seconded. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public properties.
I'm sorry. We have two constables in the public safety. We need a roll call for John Ruin of 32 Pine Street, Wakefield, Mass., and Paul Hearns, the 2nd, 29 Fenton Ave. Both approved.
Motion made. Seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Public properties, Counsel Annette.
Mr. President, the committee voted unanimously to accept, make motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Roll call.
Okay, we have to read these two.
Roll call first.
Okay. Okay, couns-
Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
There's an emergency.
Second.
Do we have to do one at a time? Okay, so on the first one, please read it, and that's the one we'll vote on the emergency on.
Okay, we have two for the emergency.
Yeah, but you go, we can only do one at a time.
Okay. The request to redeem property at 134 Walnut Street.
Okay. Motion made for an emergency on that? Seconded?
Back then.
Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
We need some water here, or what? Okay. On the second emergency.
Okay.
On the second emergency.
Second emergency. Order that the Law Department prepare all necessary documents granting easements to the City of Lynn for property located on Warren Place, abutting for Warren Place, 8 Warren Place, and 12 Warren Place pursuant to a plan of easement taken for roadway purposes over a way known as Warren Place, prepared by Reed Land Surveyors, 365 Chadon Street, Lynn, Mass., dated April 5th, 2017.
Motion made on the emergency, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Any new business?
Licenseing?
Yep.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't see it on my thing. Yea, me. License committee, Counsel Walsh.
Unanimous vote of the committee. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. New business.
Set down a public hearing for a home rule petition regarding the transferring of custodial and maintenance employees to the school department.
To the wish of the council. Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And we have, under new business, a discussion with CFO Peter Karen regarding a meal tax.
Before we get started, I just want to clarify that the counsel asked Mr. Karen to come before us tonight so that we could discuss the meal tax. This is at the wish of the council, so if Mr. Karen would take the podium, and if any of the counselors have any questions, or Counsel Barton?
Yeah, this is long overdue. We need the meal tax in this city in a worse way. We're hurting financially, and this is going to bring in some good revenue. Mr. Karen, just for an example, say if I spent $100 in a restaurant, what would that add to my bill?
75 cents.
75 cents. So if I went to Brothers Deli and had breakfast and it cost me $10, what would that add to my bill?
8 cents.
Yeah, so I think it's long overdue. And what kind of money could this generate?
Based on the available information on the Department of Revenue website, I estimate it would be about $700,000 a year.
And what would that entail for, say, layoffs?
Well, based on what's been discussed so far between the administration and some of the counselors and myself and the mayor, we've made some good progress in terms of identifying some areas where we can close the budget gap that currently exists. I can't guarantee that this won't eliminate layoffs, but it will make it less likely at this point in time. It will more than likely save some jobs, if not eliminate the need for layoffs. Thank you.
Counsel Walsh?
Are you familiar with the other cities and towns that have this? Do you know?
I just, I looked this afternoon at the Department of Revenue has all the cities and towns listed that have implemented it. The, I would say the town, the only town... Lynn is obviously the most significant town in either Middlesex County or in Essex County that does not have a meal tax. In Essex County, the biggest town that doesn't have a meals tax is Marblehead. Most of the rest of them are places like Tops Field and Wenham and Grove Lynn and places like that. All the cities have the meals tax. In Middlesex County, all the cities have the meals tax. The largest town I was able to find that did not have it of any consequence was Hopkinton in Middlesex County. So pretty much everyone that has any kind of commercial tax base other than Lynn and maybe Marblehead and Hopkinton have a meals tax right now in either Essex County or Middlesex County.
Thank you.
Counsel Lapierre?
Mr. Karen, could you talk to us about the advantage of adopting such a meals tax now in terms of the fiscal year beginning on July 1 versus adopting it at a later time?
The Department of Revenue implements the meals tax on a quarterly basis. So if the council were to approve the meals tax and the mayor either approve it or if she were to veto it, the council override the veto. As long as that occurred before March 31st, the, excuse me, May 31st, the meals tax would take effect for July 1. If we miss the March, the May 31st deadline, it would not take effect till October 1, so we would lose about $175,000 in revenue for FY18.
Thank you.
Counsel Calucci?
Now, who would collect the taxes, Peter?
The individual restaurants collect the taxes and turn it over to the state in addition to the regular state meals tax. And the state then reimburses the city as part of the quarterly, probably the monthly local aid distribution. They make a payment monthly, so probably, you know, if they collect the money in December, we would probably get it at the end of February or January.
Thank you.
Counsel Lapierre?
One follow-up, too. Is there any way to earmark these new revenues to, as what Counsel Barton was talking about, perhaps toward saving or preserving public safety or other city departments? Is there a way to sort of make sure that money's going to the right space?
The money is a general fund revenue, so I don't think you can do that other than as sort of a policy. I would defer it to Attorney Lamanna, but I think that's accurate.
Counsel Barton?
Counsel Lapierre, I think we can recommend to the mayor that it be used for public safety.
Counsel Capano?
Yeah. I think we've discussed this at subcommittees, you know, at length. And, you know, for all the reasons that brought up 75 cents on a $100 bill, it's notable the cities and towns that don't have a meals tax as compared to the ones that do. The ones that do, PBD Salem, the local towns, cities and towns around here already have adopted this. What I like about doing this is, we, you know, we've been talking for a few months now about the fiscal problems the city is facing. And as a city council, we are limited as into what we can do. And I think that a meals tax is one positive step that we can take that would produce a significant amount of money that would help towards the budget shortfalls. So I think that, you know, I think we should, you know, we should vote in favor of this. I want to say that I'm in favor of this, and, you know, I think that if we vote for this and, you know, if the mayor vetoes it and we override it, I think we could have an impact on this year's budget, not sometime in the future. I mean, right away. And we heard testimony from the public safety officials at the last meeting, the police chief, the fire chief, Counsel Barton, as to the necessity for funding, you know, for public safety in this city. And I just think that this is one thing that the council can do. And, you know, I think we should do that.
Is that a motion?
I'd like to make a motion if we are finished with discussion at this time.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Discussion.
I'd like to read a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion ordered that pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 4, Section 4, and Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 641, Section 2, the City of Lynn hereby accepts the statutory provisions for the acceptance of the local meal tax option to impose a sales tax upon the sale of restaurant meals originated from the City of Lynn by a vendor of a rate of 75, .75% of the gross receipts of the vendor from the sale of restaurant meals.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Counsel Ozy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I realize along with my colleagues the importance and the necessity for the city to find revenues, particularly our public safety. I'm not satisfied with the recommendation, and I don't want to belabor this, but I just want to say I can't support it unless it's dedicated towards public safety. And what I've heard from legal is that it can't be designated that way. And I'm torn, but I just can't support it at this time for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ozy. Anyone else wishing to speak? Counsel Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to remind folks in the City of Lynn that we are already paying this tax. We pay this tax every time we go to Boston for a night out, whether we go to Route 1 in Saugus, whether we're in downtown Salem, whether in the malls of Danvers, the malls of PBD, the movie theater in Revere, or Market Street in Lindfield, or a night out on the waterfront in Winthrop. We are paying, we are paying those communities' meals taxes every time we leave the four corners of the City of Lynn. Now, if you don't leave the four corners of the City of Lynn, then you know very well that we have some significant public safety issues that will not be remedied by not having enough police officers or firefighters on the street. So for those folks to think that we have somehow levied a tax upon the citizens of Lynn, you're mistaken. Every other community surrounding us has levied a tax upon us. We're just making it equal. So when folks come from their communities to our community to enjoy a night out, whether you're going to go to the auditorium or whether you're here to see one of our nice restaurants, it's equitable, and it's minimal in its impact. So this isn't a new tax on Lynn. We're just catching up with all the other communities around us, and we're making our community better for it. Now, I do have concerns as to whether or not the mayor supports this. I think this is a very important issue for the mayor to address. I would like to see, although we are under significant time constraints, let me repeat that, we are under significant time constraints to implement this program in time to make sure that we can collect enough revenues to stave off some significant layoffs in our public safety departments. And I think Peter Karen would sit here and acknowledge that. This isn't something that we've just concocted and decided to do on a whim. This is something we need to get in place for our next fiscal year because it is happening. This is something we need to get in place for our next fiscal year because it is happening. When I say "it," financial issues are happening as we speak. But, Mr. President, it is important to hear the voice of the mayor on this issue. It's important to have her come before us and give her opinion. I think we all welcome her opinion, we want to hear her opinion. If this is something that is contentious between the bodies, the mayor's office and the council, we need to know that. If this is something where this needs to be looked at further, where if the mayor decides to do, issue a veto, and there has to be a discussion on a veto override, that is so important for our, for our community to have that discussion. We should have it here, we should have it before the folks at home who want to understand what's going on in the city and the city finances. I would ask that if we could send a letter to the mayor, ask her to come to a meeting at your leisure, Mr. President, where you would like to schedule that. I know we have a meeting May 30, and it looks like timing-wise, we have to meet on the 30th to maybe address this issue again, but if the mayor has real serious concerns about the implementation of this meals tax, I ask that she comes before us before then and discuss that issue with us openly and honestly, and we'll work with her. We've always, always been willing to work with the mayor. So I fully support this, I've been paying this, we all have been paying this for many, many years. I think it's time for folks to start paying it from other communities in Lynn. I stand firm with my colleagues and yourself, Mr. President, in saying that this is important for our city. Thank you.
Was that in the form of a motion to request the mayor to come before the body?
I would say a friendly amendment. Motion to amend, yes.
Do you want to amend it, or?
I would include that as a amended, friendly amendment to the motion, that we reach out to the mayor and ask her to present to the body should she have any issues with our actions here tonight.
Okay, so a motion is on the floor for Peter Capano, and it's been seconded, so we would have to vote on that, but then?
I would suggest unless Mr. Capano wanted to adopt my friendly amendment as part of his motion.
I just don't, I don't want to vote dependent on whether we have a meeting, you know, I'd like to do this right away so we meet the deadline, you know, so we meet the May 31 timeframe.
I would argue that it would not impact the implementation of the program, but it would extend an opportunity for the mayor to come and discuss this matter should she have any issues with it in the interim.
So if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, we're voting to approve the, adopt the meals tax, but at the same time, the stipulation, or you're adding an amendment to ask the mayor to come before this body at a future council meeting next week?
Next week, Mr. President, unless there was no issue, then there's no need for further discussion, correct? But if there are issues in the mayor's office over this, I think she should come and talk to us directly.
Just for clarification, so would this vote be dependent on whether?
No.
No, okay, so, all right.
So we'd have to vote on Peter's motion first, and then on Dan's. So is there any other discussion?
Just a little clarification, Mr. President. So if Dan, if Counsel Capano is amenable to a friendly amendment, then the person who seconded would withdraw their second and allow Dan Cahill's friendly amendment to Counsel Capano's original motion. Is that what you're?
No, no, we're voting on Peter's motion first, Counsel Capano's, and then on Counsel Cahill's.
Cahill can bring that up as a separate motion. Okay, very good, so motion on the floor is Counsel Capano.
Yep. So is there any other discussion?
I'm sorry, just checking.
Okay, Peter's first, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
No.
No. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Counsel Cahill has a motion to ask the mayor to come before us and to voice her opinion.
I'll put that in the form of a motion of that, I make a motion that should the mayor have any reservations regarding the implementation of the meals tax, that she come before the council at her earliest convenience to discuss said matters, said concerns, I would say.
Second. Okay, motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Counsel Capano?
I'd like to place an emergency on the motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, emergency on both motions, correct?
Yes.
Okay, motion made, seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
No.
No, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Have to do this one separate? Emergency on the?
No, that was on both.
No, because we don't want to say both.
Okay, we'll do an emergency on the second one, too.
Okay, Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
All right, if, members of the council indulge me for a minute. I can't tell you how proud I am of all of you tonight. We don't often, as a council body, get a chance to make a difference, especially in an election year. No politician likes to use the word "tax" for fear of not being elected or whatever the reason may be, but our job as counselors is to protect the citizens of Lynn, and hopefully with the recommendations that were made here tonight and this meals tax, that the mayor will see it our way and use that money for public safety so that we can keep our firefighters and keep our police officers on the street and keep our citizens safe. Our job is simple, it's to provide the best services we can for the public and keep our workers working in City Hall. So I just want to say thank you to all of you tonight. I think it took a lot of balls for what everybody did here, so I just want to say good job. What's the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to congratulate Darren Seer and Jay Walsh for being inducted into the Lynn Tech Hall of Fame.
I'll give the same speech I gave that night, thank you. Counsel Lapierre?
I do have a piece of new business, Mr. President, and I think, I feel that a couple of constituent calls over the last several days on the Lynn Water and Sewer, I know we have representatives, Counsel Calucci, Counsel Capano, on that commission. I would like to request that they take back to the commission, when the hydrants are being flushed in various areas of the city, that notification goes out. Currently, I believe an item ad is taken out, but with all due respect to reporter Grillo, not everyone reads the paper. I think if my colleagues could take back sort of advertising or promoting various different media outlets, whether it's Lynn Community Television, or through social